Call meeting to order at seven oh three, rise for pledge.
Here.
Miffel?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
So I can hear you.
Here.
Here. Any public comments? Seeing them, on to new business.
Actually, I'd ask Rachel from Raymond Rappson to come and present their proposal for services for the audit preparation and bank reconciliation.
Yeah, monthly services.
Okay, monthly services. If you'd mind standing in the corner.
Oh, sure.
Thanks, Rachel.
No, probably not.
Thank you.
Audit preparation of what?
Bank reconciliation.
Thanks for having me here tonight. Mary, has the proposal been distributed to the entire board? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, you all have a copy?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just pull that mic just a little bit, I know it, that way, perfect.
Is that better?
Yeah, so that way everybody.
Yeah, I do have a, yeah, small voice sometimes. So, thank you again for having me here this evening. As Mary stated, we did provide a proposal for services as presented to the township for your consideration. The scope of the proposed agreement would be to provide what we call audit preparation services, which essentially is year-end close, journal entries, budgetary assistance as presented in bullet point one on the proposal. What that does is essentially gets your general ledger, your books and records, updated, adjusted, amended, and ready for audit. The second bullet point is another service that we would propose to provide, which would be the review of monthly bank reconciliations and also a review of bi-weekly payroll for the fiscal year 2025 and their after. And also, last but not least, the third bullet point really is kind of what we call our catch-all. So if you had additional questions, needed additional assistance from us as items and, you know, as you go through the business of the township throughout the year, or something crops up, we can certainly provide you assistance in other matters as they become necessary. As you can see, the proposed agreement has cost illustrated, or I should say listed right in the proposal in the next paragraph for your review and consideration. And I guess at this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Yeah, I am not a financial person, so I'm hoping you can just help me understand some of this.
Of course.
As far as bank reconciliation, can you first kind of briefly explain, what does that really mean? That's just balancing incoming versus out, or entries that were made to make sure payment was physically made? Or can you explain that?
It's kind of all of the above. So essentially, bank reconciliations take all of the activity that runs through the actual bank account at the bank, compares it to all of the information that's recorded in the books and books and records of the township, and it walks through any, if there were any discrepancies, any variances, what we call reconciling items. And once a reconciliation is complete, you know that all of the transactions that went in and out of your physical bank account agree to and have been reconciled to all of the transactions that went in and came out of your general ledger.
Okay, thank you. And then can you explain as far as separation of duties and the audit concerns, why that needs to be, why we don't have the current staff, like the staff we have, why they can't do that or shouldn't do that for separation duties, can you explain that?
So, internal controls are an important part of the, what we call the fiduciary duties and responsibilities of staff and the board as well, and it's one component of it. Internal controls, a component of internal controls would be, like you mentioned, separation of duties, or another term for that is commonly known as checks and balances. So you don't have one person governing all of the transactions and checking their own work, so to speak, because that can lend itself to a higher risk of errors and certainly a higher risk of potential.
Like fraud or something?
Yeah.
So, you're saying because the treasurer and the clerk's office both handle entering information into the accounts, they should not be the ones doing the reconciling?
No, we're not checking our own work.
Yeah, I get that.
If I do my own charges, I don't approve my own, Monica has to approve them.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if right now that can be done, you're saying the reconciling, because it's so kind of connected to both, it couldn't simply be, it's not somebody approving or checking the ones I've.
No, 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 no. It's just, like, right now, learning the bank recs, it's been a chore, it's been a struggle. The, learning the GL numbers and so, especially trying to do this during tax time. So, it has been, I think that once we get that learned, like, that's going to be on the agenda in a couple of weeks for BSNA training. We've been asking for that, they're like two to three months out, we're having a phone conversation, a group with me and Nadine to get training, it's $1,100 to get that training. That will help as far as doing the bank recs through BSNA, that still, Mary's not familiar with doing bank recs, to having another set of eyes looking at it and checking it, is everything being reconciled? We got written up, we ended up getting written up for that again last year on the audit, in the November audit, because the same person doing the data entry into BSNA was also doing the bank recs. That cannot happen. That's, that's not the separation of the duties. So, which is one of the reasons that it was really imperative that we get, you know, the different office personnel, but the thing is, is also making sure that all of the office personnel are working together through that BSNA program. Because what is happening in building, they do a lot of permits and money like that, but then it has to get over to the treasurer's office, you had the same person handling all of that. Same thing with planning and zoning, they're coming in, they're paying for plan reviews and things like that. It has to be split, and right now, we're in the place where we need to have another set of eyes helping everybody see, this is what you need to do. You need to work together, but you need to stay in your own lane at the same time. Because before, we have not had that. You still have to have the officials working so tightly together, but again, staying in their own lane, like Mary putting her ledger, Monica, you gotta approve that, that journal entry, Monica, you gotta start putting in your journal entries for your transfers of funds from the one bank account to another, from the bank itself here into our management, into our deposits where the big CDs and all that big money market money is. So, all of that, it's just like having that assistance, having somebody to help oversee that. Until we learn it, ideally, it would be very good for Armada to have a bookkeeper. I have felt that for a while, but I also think, I wanted to take a pay cut. I mean, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'll take my pay down to $25,000. Let's get this, let's get this figured out, because I think that really what needs to happen is that we need to have people that are gonna stay in place and not be moving from election to election. Because, just like in the business, when you are constantly having turnover, if you have to keep training new people, you keep putting money into training different people to do the same thing over and over and over. And at some point, as a taxpayer, now I'm talking as a taxpayer, as a taxpayer, because I've sat out there for many years, and I've seen where we had a situation where that, with that, where we had bank recs not done for over a year. Stuff like that just cannot happen anymore. And I think that we have the opportunity to fix it for good. And then that's gonna, you know, when it comes time for raises too, that's gonna be, see, well now, let me see, your load has been lifted, let's reduce wages over here if we can. It's kind of like, don't.
I appreciate that.
It's kind of like, don't.
Appreciate that information. So, and I know Raymond's here talking, but could, if we had the properly trained person or somebody with the knowledge, could reconciliations be done from, like, the planning or building offices that are under the supervisor, could that person potentially have that responsibility as well? Or is there certainly?
No.
Okay. I don't know as far as that, well, could they legally, or you mean because it's not practical? I don't know what kind of training or certification you mean.
I would say it's both of them. I would say, because they're handling funds too.
Because they're signing permit fees and stuff like that?
You got permit fees, you got splits, you have plan reviews, you have all that stuff.
And just to make a distinction, even if something isn't necessarily illegal, that wouldn't necessarily be illegal, right? But it's not necessarily a best practice, right? And so that's what we want to bring to the table, if you will, is some good guidance, education, best practices, establishing a strong foundation. I kind of think of it in my own head as roots and wings, you know, how we talk about building roots and then giving you wings, and so that's kind of how I think of it in my head with these types of engagements is, we want to come in and get immersed in the township business, so to speak, from the standpoint in, you know, within the parameters of what's outlined in the contract, right? And a lot of things will come to light, things that you might not even think of. For example, as we get to know your operations a little bit better, we might think, oh, you know what? Maybe you should try this, maybe you might like this financial report, let's try this procedure, let's see how this works for you. There's a lot of, there's a real breadth, I think, of options that could be available to you in terms of segregating those duties and what might make the most sense in terms of being efficient and streamlined with operations and with your budget dollars.
So, there's a monthly fee to do just the reconciliations, if I'm understanding this correctly. And bi-weekly payroll, I'm not sure what, is that reconciling the payroll? Or is that actually performing the payroll services?
It's not processing payroll, it's reviewing it.
Okay.
Reviewing it, yep.
And then there's, there's the lump sum fee, annual fee for audit prep. Now, I understand that there are things that need to happen for an audit corrections, if you will. I think you laid it out, I'm forgetting the terminology. But if, if we're having, if we're paying another set of eye, doing reconciliation and hopefully catching and fixing, it would be my assumption that we, we would be, then hopefully be minimizing some of the errors that we found at the audit, and therefore, that fee seems kind of significant for what may be not a lot of work. Can you kind of clarify why that, that would be appropriate to have that significant a cost at the end?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the monthly work is actually separate from the year-end close work.
I understand that.
Right? And it's separate because the monthly work, which we've listed out, is being certainly the bank recs, reviewing bi-weekly payroll, and then other questions as they come up. We, we get emails fairly frequently already from Mary and Monica to talk through certain issues, really anything under the sun, if you will, obviously related to township business. And that would be the monthly fee part of it. Now, the first bullet point, the audit prep piece of it, over time, could definitely go down as, as we work ourselves into, I use the roots and wings analogy, over time, you know, when we're able to educate staff and provide those support services in that way, over time, I think maybe some of those audit prep services could be kind of doled back to the township, if you will, over time. However, that first bullet point for audit prep, that's where a lot of the higher-level technical accounting standards come into play. And while township staff definitely has the capability, the training and the education to perform day-to-day tasks, the year-end audit prep tasks can get quite technical and more high-level than what you might expect out of the skillset of the day-to-day staff.
Now, even with the bank recs though, at some point, you know, we're gonna learn that down, because right now, it's just, where are the glitches? What are we not doing in BSNA? What do we need to be doing to get that to reconcile? But eventually, the bank recs should be able to just be back right in there. The thing is, is to have somebody double-checking it, other than, you know, a third party to double-check and make sure that those bank recs are all shipshape.
So.
Yeah. I think so too.
You're saying that if there may come a time where we quit making mistakes, or is that what the reconciling is?
No.
That we may not need Raymond anymore?
No, no. Well, yeah, I'm seeing, I'm seeing, I'm seeing that eventually, like, right now, with some of the bank recs, they're all zero, but then, when we're, we just had a call with BSNA with this on Friday, and it was like, okay, but you can do that, but then I still have this money hanging out there. It's very, like, that BSNA program, it's like learning it.
But you're actually not, in simple terms.
Well, it's saying that it is, but then why is this $250 still hanging out there? And then they said, well, oh, but that's okay, because it'll come off like in six months.
It's a timing thing?
This just doesn't even make sense to me. So, it's stuff like that, that I think, like, just saying what, what is okay and what isn't. But right now, I know that a lot of the general ledgers, I haven't done them, they're not done. So, like, it's things like that, and we have to get that training in to see, make sure that we're putting in that right general ledger. We've been going over the ones from the previous administration, putting those numbers in and it's saying that number's invalid. How can that be? It doesn't make sense, when we're using the identical number.
And also, it's important to distinguish too, that as far as the day-to-day operations go, the township largely functions on a cash basis of accounting, meaning cash in, cash out, right? We receive an income, we pay our bills. However, governmental entities are actually required to base their accounting on, we were working with three different types of accounting methods. One of them is the cash in, cash in. Yeah, essentially on a cash basis, which we just talked about, that's your day-to-day operations. The day-to-day operations are largely performed already by staff. And in bullet point two, like we talked about, we would assist in the day-to-day operations by assisting with the bank recs and monitoring that bi-weekly payroll and reviewing that. In addition, when we get to year-end, we have to take that cash basis set of books and records, and we have to update it and convert it to what's called a modified accrual basis of accounting. I know I'm getting a little technical here, but I want you to understand that the audit prep isn't necessarily correcting mistakes, right? It's incorporating that different level, that different basis of accounting, which we call modified accrual, meaning we start to accrue some accounts receivable, some accounts payable, and other accrued liabilities and so forth. Then, just to make it fun for us, the governmental accounting standards board, and that's what governs all of how the presentation of financial statements has to be presented for local units of government, we then move into what's called a full accrual basis of accounting. So that's another level of accounting. And again, these things need to occur, even if your books and records were spotless. It's getting ourselves in line and in compliance with all of those requirements that are set forth by the GASB and by Michigan Department of Treasury. So there's that component of it too. And it's those last couple components, that modified accrual basis of accounting and the full accrual basis of accounting, which are presented each year in your audited financial statements, that's where that technical expertise comes from, you know, that's what we'd be proposing to assist you with each year as part of the audit prep services. And again, that's something that we're engaged to do oftentimes, even if you don't have any problems with the bank recs, and even if you're recording everything perfectly in your general ledger, it's still largely being done on a cash basis, which is fine for, for day-to-day. But then, we do have to bring ourselves into compliant, into compliance each year-end with those different and higher-level types of accounting bases. So that's what we're talking about with that piece of it.
Well, even with payroll, like the accrual, like last year, like some of our payroll this year, you're gonna have March payroll, that's gonna be on the April check.
Not paid till April.
So the marketing has to accrue too.
Yep, yep, absolutely, that's one piece of it, for sure.
And that's one aspect that they do that, that I don't do.
I got you.
Right, right.
It was accrued, the expense was accrued in March, but we're not finishing.
And it was, the last administration, I know the last meeting they had, one of the things they said on the way out is, oh, by the way, you need a bookkeeper, so they admitted it as well. And on the last audit, they actually had to send a letter to the state of Michigan saying, we know there's an issue, we're gonna put corrective measures in place, and this is one of them.
Haven't we been saying that for a number of years?
It was, it was the first time I've seen it went to the state of Michigan.
So what's, yeah, what has happened?
This was the first.
Yeah. What has happened over time is, I guess I'll say in the good old days, when I started my career, auditors were allowed to make all of these different year-end entries as part of the audit. Then, over time, and really a lot of the fallout, if you will, happened after Enron, and there was all those big scams and investment and whatever, that had a huge, huge impact on the accounting and auditing industry as a whole. And so then there was this big movement to say, if you're gonna do an audit, you're gonna do an audit, period. You're also not going to be responsible, and you can't, we won't allow you to be responsible for also closing the year-end books, because then essentially, you're auditing your own work, if you will. And so that became a big no-no, and that's become more and more enforced, if you will, over time. What we have found, because Raymond has been your auditors, is that we are getting to that point of the auditors were doing so many of those adjustments at year-end. Some of them, yes, are correcting adjustments, there's some things that need to be tightened up, certainly. But a lot of them were just because of those couple, you know, those two additional layers of accounting bases that we talked about just a minute ago, that, you know, a smaller township, you're not gonna go hire a CFO for $150,000 a year, right? That doesn't make any sense for a township of this size, not when you can, you know, engage with, you know, in a situation like this, where we can come in, we can take care of those things for you, we can answer your questions year-round, provide you with whatever guidance you need, and get you ready for your audit. But if we're going to do all of that, which we'd love to work with you, of course, and that's why we submitted our proposal, then we can't also do your audit. So then we'll help you find a different auditing firm, we know many in the area. And I know Daniel has mentioned, he has a couple firms in mind who could take over that work for you. Then, your year-end work and your audit go back to being very separate, as they should be.
And the audit will be much faster, it won't take as long, right?
Yes.
Because, right, by now, we would have already signed the engagement letter with Raymond, usually in February. And we haven't done that, because we need to approve this way of doing it.
Are you?
And then not.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
And I really think that we should really accept their proposal, at least for this one fiscal year. You know, we're running out of time, and we need to have this service, this is my point of view.
I had one more question, I guess, would be, you give a monthly fee and a lump sum fee, do you have anticipated hours that you use to determine this amount? So, because that's maybe my question, is how much time do you expect to spend here? What are we getting for twenty, how much time we're getting for $2,500? How much time we're getting for $15,000?
Yeah, so what we do is, we, we come up with an anticipated number of hours, and that's how we arrive at these fees. What we do for many of these agreements is, we like to provide you with that flat fee, if you will, because it's easier for budgetary purposes. It also builds in that flexibility, so for example, if, let's say it gets to be a budget season, my favorite season, and let's say Mary and Monica, or Chris even, you know, we have a lot of things we want to talk about. And let's say we spend a lot of hours, you know, you don't have to worry about, oh, we're gonna nickel-and-dime you to death over this, you're gonna have a huge bill, you know, at month X versus, you know, that smoothed, you know, planned monthly fee. So, that's, that's why we do it in that way.
I understand that.
Uh-huh.
Is it safe to assume that you use $250 an hour is to determine these things?
That's a ballpark, yes, that's, that would be a fair ballpark. But we don't want to, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention, we don't want to have you think that you're held to, you know, X number of hours per month, we're not gonna, oh, I'm gonna drop my pencil and any, you know what I mean, because we've hit the limits.
How much do you think an audit would cost on top of the $45,000, though?
That's, I'm not familiar with other auditing firm fees, honestly. I don't even know that I should really speak to that, I would not even want to hazard, I guess.
Because that, that is, you know, I know where you're coming from, because I come from that same place. It's a lot of money.
And I've sat back and I've listened, and I just have to throw my, my concern that we're essentially adding on another employee when you look at $45,000. And this kind of goes on this side of the table. When we start looking at raises and wanting more money, I'm gonna be the first to tell you that, I'll throw it right out there, I'm gonna vote no on this if we're gonna move forward with getting the service, because we can't just keep taking more money to not, to not be doing our jobs, because for all of these years that I've been in this community, we haven't had a separate individual to do, the clerk, the treasurer, you know, to, to separate for what you guys are proposing here. I understand it probably needs to happen, but it's happening at a very expensive expense on top of now finding another firm, which we'll be able to find another firm. We don't know what that dollar amount could be. If it's higher than what it's been consistently, we're now at another added cost that we have to look at the taxpayers to say, now we, we have to justify this. That's my concern, is that, it's not that it's not getting done, but how did it not get done for these years? Does that make sense when I, you know, say for?
You're like, what change that we could do it goodbye before, and now?
Yeah, and I'm not saying just the previous administration saying, and I was here when they said that, you know, we needed a bookkeeper. How is it that it happened, or didn't happen when Camille was here? How did it happen with the, when Peggy was here? You know, how did that happen when we didn't have this oversight? Now we're having someone potentially come in here at a, someone's annual wage, on top of another audit, that we're gonna do that, and potentially people are gonna be looking for raises for whatever that they're gonna be doing? This is gonna be helping you with the fireside as well, too?
Well, everything.
Everything. How, how, how do we, how do we justify that when you say you're looking for more money when we're paying somebody to do some of your work or doing your work? Where, where do we?
I'm still doing the daily work that I can do, I'm not an accountant. Like Rachel said, over the years, our auditors have always given us the journal, journal entries to do.
That would be one.
There's more GASB, there's, there's, there's much more to do with auditing than previous years.
But you've done it for, you, you've been a clerk for how many years? Fifteen plus?
Two thousand eight.
Okay, so for seventeen years.
And actually, you know what, it's not my job to do this, it's my job to get it done. So I could, we can hire somebody else to do this work.
I'm not, I am not, I'm not picking on you, Mary, I'm just asking the position. If there was somebody, if you were, if you were on that side, and we had, Marcia is sitting here as the clerk, I would ask the same question, it's not you individually, Mary, it's your position that I'm asking, saying, we're, this is a lot of money that we're gonna be putting out here for them to do the work that was already being done, that was done by previous administrations that were able to do that. Now we're saying that we, that we should get somebody else, it's just a lot of money.
You gotta go from zero to $45,000.
And that's if you don't go over, right? That's if you, you're, you're. And that's if you don't go over, right? That's if you, you're, you're giving us a projected.
Well, there's, if there's other, general accounting guidance at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour on top.
It won't go over. Even if our hours go over, it won't go over.
Do we say that in here? That we won't charge more?
Yep.
Well, it says, it says here, provide additional general accounting guidance and assistance throughout the year. At a discounted blended hourly rate of two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So that's a little, maybe a little confusing to me.
I don't want, I want it to be very clear that it, that, you know, that it doesn't go, that we aren't, this is the, a flat, you know, that, that is the rate that's there. If we go way over, we go way under. If we go under, you're benefiting, right? If we go way over, that's the cost of doing business that I feel on our side versus we've already presented a forty-five thousand dollar increase. If they go over and charge in at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, that's a pretty easy, five thousand dollars is nothing. That, that's like a, a drop in the hat when you start at two fifty an hour.
If you were to hire, hire an accountant to do all this stuff, I know Ray Township has one, they're spending almost forty thousand dollars a year on that accountant.
To do reconciling and audit prep?
Actually, it's more of this is even to do the payroll. It's, it's a lot more things.
And so they're, they're getting more for the same price, is what you're saying.
But it's not uncommon for them, some, another small township to get somebody else to do the work.
Again, I just, I asked, it was, to me, I thought a simple question. How we, how has it gone this long? That it hasn't, it hasn't needed, it hasn't been brought up and we have, apparently, outside of getting some of these letters that we've gotten by annually by not having something done right. We're not bankrupt. There hasn't been fraud that we're aware of. But now we're having somebody to come in to, I feel, do work.
I think one way to look at it is, is we've gone years without insurance policy and we're lucky we didn't get in an accident. And this is the insurance policy we probably should've had. I mean, that's just one way to look at it, I guess. I mean, just because.
And, and David mentioned it before that we, you should get someone.
And my thing is, is we should approach this as a one-year thing. And after one year, we learn what we learned. Is there ability to bring somebody in, kind of, you know, a bookkeeper or something? But, you know, all, everything out there has been saying, we need this, we need this, we need this. And like I said, we've gone years without getting in an accident without insurance, but all it takes is one, now what do we do?
And, and as a reminder too, in the past, the auditors have, have absorbed quite a bit of that work. And they just, they've gotten to the point where they simply cannot do that anymore. So that would be one big change. You're asking what, what had changed? That would be one thing to point to.
I understand. It's just, it's,
Yep.
It's a lot of money to justify to not just who is here in this office right now. It's everybody else that questions saying, wow. You guys are spending an awful lot of money for that up there. How did this go on for so long? Why are you spending so much now? You know, those are very valid questions to somebody.
Do you feel like you have clear answers or is there more that I can explain to you?
From what you're saying, I do. I don't, I just, I'll be very candid. I don't agree with it. Based upon the fact that we're spending this much money. It's no different than the brick that we had out here. Now all of a sudden we had this big bill because it got neglected for so long. That now we were the ones that had to bring this up. It's kind of like this here that we're spending someone's salary.
I'd say the difference there is we got multiple quotes. One concern of mine is that we haven't received multiple. You know, is there, are there other, how do we know that this is a fair rate? And again, I know you're here and I'm not trying to be offensive to you, but
Not at all.
How do we know that this is the, the best price for the, for the product, I guess? And we're, we're required to get multiple quotes on projects.
Well, we're gonna kinda late on that anyways, but I'm gonna make a motion to, so we, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contractual services as presented for audit preparation and backdoor facilitation for one year from Raymond Robson.
Is there a second?
A second, just to have a conversation.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, though. Because we don't even know how much an audit is gonna cost. You know, we don't, we don't even know.
Will the auditor say?
About eighteen.
Will the new auditor?
Our last year was twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty. So I imagine it wouldn't be that much, maybe eighteen or twenty.
You're saying an auditor would look and say they have a bookkeeper, so we won't charge them as much? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, it'd be, it's all prepared.
They'd have to do less work.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but would they know that when they're giving us the price?
Yes, they would know that.
And Mary, I'm gonna ask is, if, if this for some reason got tabled to the next meeting. So we can bring a budget back that's balanced with this in it. And with the information, some of the things people are looking for, would that be out of?
If you can somehow get that so that we have that, that it's a little bit more.
And exactly, bring a balanced budget with this in here.
Sure, that it isn't a, a large expenditure. I feel a little more comfortable. I don't like it. But that doesn't mean that I can't help support it so that we can get, you know, past this hurdle. I think it's fair though that everybody, you know, feels my concern about spending that.
And one of the things to be noted, while it is forty-five thousand, it's also split between the fire and us and the, and the general budget. But I think, you know, if we did table it, it gives us the ability to, to spend the next two weeks and bring it to the next meeting. We'll get all the information so we're making, you know, a more educated decision and, you know, with a balanced budget with this in.
Well, my concern on the budget is if we establish these numbers based on our actual costs, how can we, how can we add expense? And justify taking away from somewhere else if those were needed expenses before? So are we just gonna decide something?
We're just gonna sharpen the pencil, that's all.
That we're, we're gonna do and now we're not gonna do?
I'm okay with trying that. If we can get that to, to somewhere, I don't wanna have an additional. We can somehow take it to where it's not going to affect something. Hey, that road maintenance, I always brought up, that twenty-eight thousand dollars that never ever got used, but it was in that budget.
Well, if we can sharpen the pencil and this works and it's functional, it puts us in a position now we have that security, that insurance, we'll call it.
Yep.
You know, and then we, as I said, we'll make an educated decision. Everything's on the table. We know what, I can bring that document that shows from the state. That they said, you know, the corrective measures are put in place.
They all, they all have that, the corrective action plan. So everybody should've known all this. So I'm gonna take a roll. Swag, yes, Michael?
What's on the floor?
On the, on the motion.
Is it still your, still your motion that you had?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to close it off.
Nope, nope.
Gets here?
No.
Joe?
No.
Gotcha.
No.
Do you wanna make another motion? Do we have to make a motion today? Well, we already voted on, do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, cause that motion got killed.
So we'll, so make a motion to bring it back and.
At a regular meeting?
Yep.
Going till the March meeting?
Yeah.
Just bring it back because we, we already made a motion on it, put it back on the next agenda.
You made the motion, Michael?
Yep, yep. That's my motion to bring it back, yep.
What is the date of the March meeting? I'm sorry.
I think it's the twelfth.
The twelfth.
Okay.
Yeah. This way, you know, we'll have all the information and, like I said, we'll make sure it fits in the budget and then it's a discussion.
Well, we gotta add in an audit too, so we gotta estimate an audit.
Now we'll have those numbers too.
Well, the audit's already in here. We're just at, this, sorry.
Nicholas?
Yes.
So, you know, Joe?
Yes.
Gets here?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Can I get the, what is the motion again then?
This is a motion to bring it back at the meeting.
To the March meeting.
I certainly appreciate you, your explanation and answering all our questions.
My pleasure. Thank you. And I would just, if, if I could, because time is becoming a nuisance, make sure that you make a decision next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Rachel, could you also have Daniel or yourself reach out to you with other auditing firms also?
Next is twenty-five, twenty-six budgets. Chief, what we're gonna do tonight is basically, we went over it pretty comprehensive last time. So this time we're just gonna, you know, go over what the changes were.
Good evening, board members. Here this evening to submit a balanced fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget on behalf of the Armada Flair Department. The final version only slightly differs from the one presented at the first budget meeting workshop in relation to the following. The final tax revenue projections from the assessor's office was increased to a combined total of one million nine hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for both the ALS village and Special Assessment District. This provided the opportunity to increase funding in several line items and make the following changes to the previously presented budget. Part-time wages were increased to one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to account for the newly enacted Earn Sick Time Act and a two percent increase in hourly pay. Overtime was increased by forty-five thousand dollars to account for backfill for an employee's maternity leave. Capital outlay was slightly decreased to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but still contains funding for the replacement of the current F-250 utility vehicle. These changes notwithstanding, the projected budget remains balanced with revenue and expenditures to the sum of two million five hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and six cents. I appreciate meeting with each of you individually to discuss this budget over the past week and respectfully submit it for your approval.
Thank you. The revenue, those were from the assessor, just being clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I wanna thank you for reaching out. It was a great meeting. And I asked Chris afterwards about the, the booklet that you had there. I said, why, where did that come from? He goes, no, he put that together. I didn't know that. The booklet that you put together outlined everything. I'm sure you put a lot of time and effort into it, cause it showed it. It was great to be able to see it to like, if you had a question, oh, you look right over here. There's a nice explanation, almost like a, a book for dummies type deal.
Well, I'm glad you appreciated it.
But it was good. It was really, really good and informative to, to help understand everything. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you. It was very painless. I appreciate all your help with it.
That was nice. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us.
Oh, absolutely. All right, thank you for your question.
Thank you. So we're gonna do the same thing with the general budgets, kinda over the changes. The first is the tax revenue. We got the, the final numbers, which puts it at three hundred and four thousand six hundred and fifty-five for the permits. So I've worked with Katie and Michelle on the planning and building. And we went through all of the permits, which will be brought up in, at the March meeting to reevaluate our costs in comparison to other municipalities. And we found out that we were significantly low. Again, this will be at the March meeting for approval. They both worked very hard, spreadsheets together. We sat down and went line by line. And so we made some adjustments so that what the fees would be, and that's those four items there, the changes it would be. Again, that has to be approved at the board, the March board meeting. The property lease for farming was added in. That is the, on, Ridge. Twenty-eight acres on Ridge. They farm what, seventeen of it?
Fifteen, fourteen.
Fifteen of it. The next one is, is the use of balance fund. So in this current budget we're working under was the significant project we did at the senior center in the ballpark. Where they put the, the access in. But all of that money wasn't used because of the.
We had to wait for the bond, for the grass to grow.
So we had, they held that fifty-six thousand dollars back. So that money is not being used out of this year's reserves. So what we're doing is just using it next year. So we're not spending more money. The reserves is still coming out of the same account. It's just changing the fiscal years in which it's coming out, if that makes sense. We go to the next page for the audit. You know, the dollars in there for the audit and the bookkeeping, we're still working on that and that'll be obviously further discussion. I think lastly, well, over here. The Friends of Armada, that was money that was left over for the plaque. That was added in there. And then, we added some increases to office improvement and computers. We had an audit done of our computers and found out we have some very old units that we should be looking to replacing. And the office improvement, we bumped it up just because of some things that need to be done around the building.
So the, the permit revenue, you've increased based on what, an assumption of the board approving?
Correct.
Fee schedule changes and those that fee schedule will be brought to the board for?
Correct.
Review consideration, okay?
As I said, Katie and Michelle did an unbelievable job. Their spreadsheets compared to all the other communities.
She did.
And then she just did the comparison before and after, so it'll be getting a full picture what we did.
The, as far as the expense shown for Friends of Armada, what you're saying is because the donation was received, but the money, additional funds weren't spent, you, you have to separate that out for you.
Yep, and then to use at the park.
Yep. Okay. And then just the office improvements. Do you have any specific projects that you're intending?
There's several we'd like to do, you know, on these offices each side, possibly putting some carpet in. We talked about putting flooring up here. Something that's a little more maintainable upstairs. There's a lot of holes in the plaster that we should get closed up just for safety purposes, so we don't get critters coming in. It's quite a punch list of things we'd like to do.
The computers, that's, that's quite an expense. So they're that old already? I feel like we.
There's some that are from seventeen.
Okay. Cause technology gets old quick.
Very quick.
Okay, that's, that's all the questions I had. Thank you. And as you've mentioned at the beginning, we had, I thought the meeting, the first budget meeting went very well. We came into the meeting prepared. There was a budget here for us to look at versus us filling it out as we went, which I very much appreciated that. And we had, again, because of that discussion, made, we didn't actually have the information to make it even worth meeting at the, the next two proposed meetings. And now we're here tonight. So I appreciate how thorough and streamlined this process went, is being prepared. So thank you for that.
We got a lot to do in the March meeting.
Yeah. Might take an hour.
He heard that.
Motion adjourned?
No, we gotta do a talk, at least talk about.
Policy, I'm so sorry.
Did you at least just mention that we've, even if we're not making, taking action?
We do have a, a draft copy of it. Unfortunately Lori, Lori has the flu and is quite ill and can't get through a sentence without coughing. So she is not here to present it. We do have copies of it. Unfortunately, when it printed, it didn't show the legislative changes. It just showed some highlights. So we'll get that, the tracking. We'll get the correct version to you so you can see in before and after. But we can talk back and forth, you know, any questions you have or changes you suggest and one of it.
Do you think, once we receive the track changes copy and we review it, do you think we would be take, intend to take action at the next meeting or is that more gonna be discussions, see if there's any more questions to continue with?
It would be a discussion, yeah.
Can I ask a question about the policy or no?
We're really not gonna talk about it tonight.
Yeah, we're not ready.
Next, at our next regular meeting, we tend to have some real discussion on it, so.
Yes. Now, can I ask for a motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty.
I'll second that.